Check one two, check one two. Check, check, test one two. Check, check. Test three. Test four. Test five. Test six. Check mic, testing. Check one two, check one two. Wireless mic testing. Wireless mic test two. Check mic seven. Check mic eight. Check mic nine. Check mic ten. Check one two, check one two. Check mic eleven. Check mic twelve. Wireless mic testing. Check mic twenty. Wireless mic test two. Check one two, check one two. Check mic seven. Check mic eight. Check, check, test one two. Check, check, test one two. Check, check. Check, check. Check, check. Check, check. Test three. Test three. Test four. Test four. Test five. Test five. Test six. Test six. Check mic, testing. Check mic, testing. Check one two, check one two. Check one two, check one two. Wireless mic testing. Wireless mic testing. Wireless mic test two. Wireless mic test two. Check mic seven. Check mic seven. Check mic eight. Check mic eight. Check mic nine. Check mic nine. Check mic ten. Check mic ten. Check mic eleven. Check mic eleven. Check mic twelve. Check mic twelve. Check mic twenty. Check mic twenty. Check one two, check one two.
All right, everyone at seven o'clock, let's, let's go to get started. We stand for the pledge, please. Thank you all. Welcome to our April work session. We're going to start tonight by going through committee reports. So we'll start with finance and operations. Who's going to be reading out for finance and operations?
I'll do that. The one thing that we have to report out on is our, in our new gym this summer, we will be getting the floor completely redone and repainted. And that concludes the report.
All right, thank you. Move on to personnel policy.
What's the cost of that? Fifty-three thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's never been done and it's in, it's in need of getting done.
And it's part of the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, but because the vendor has able to put us on the schedule, we're looking at late May or early June to get it done, but we'll be invoiced in June or July, after July.
Okay, that'd be great. Now are we getting the same logo and everything on the gym floor?
Yeah, we're using the updated version of our Wildcat right there, basically.
Okay.
And just doing a more modern version, cleaner version, a lot would make the gym look brighter and lighter.
Thank you.
Yeah. Correct. Our, our gym floor, the new gym floor, which is ironic to say, needs, needs to be refinished, but it's never been sanded down and refinished since it was installed in two thousand and four. So, yeah. It's held up well, but it's, yep, we did.
All right, let's, uh, move on to personnel and policy.
Uh, yes, we did not have full committee tonight, so we're being asked to table F, our policy three seventeen-two. No, that's not true. We are tabling eight sixteen, the social media. And what was the number, Kathy Jo, I apologize?
Three seventeen point two.
The three seventeen point two educator misconduct. We're tabling those and keeping them first read for next meeting, just because there wasn't a full committee and there's some things we need to discuss with timeframes in the misconduct one. And social media, there's just a few. We don't have a seal that we normally put on things, so I just wanted to make sure full committee had the choice of what to do. Okay? That's all.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Cooper. We'll move on to curriculum instruction technology.
Yes, I'll be presenting here. Clint gave us a, a report from the IT. There was a recap from last year. There was a huge undertaking for migrating all student devices to the cloud base for Microsoft. They've also implemented a new asset management and helped us system, which helps monitor the, the, uh, the computers and also helps with invoicing and billing. The new camera system was implemented as well, and that's working well. Currently, they've, Clint has already ordered all for twenty-four, twenty-five. All of the Chromebooks and they have all been received. The Windows for the high school laptops have been ordered and are expected over the next one to two months. A big savings of time is they can all come up with the vendors are pre-set up, so they don't have to set up each computer separately for the individuals. That's huge time saving. And they're going to be updating also the faculty computers. Twenty-five been done and there's going to be a hundred plus this summer and they get updated about every four years. So that was the IT. And then with curriculum, John went over, which he'll present at the next meeting. The twenty-two, twenty-three state assessment data for the PSSAs, the Keystone's and the AP exams, and he'll go over that at the next meeting. He'll have all that for everyone. You know, some of the issues that we're still seeing are still in packs, not excuses, but from COVID and, and with some of the new math resources, which we're now going to be implementing then. So, so that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. We'll then move on to extracurricular activities. All right, JB's going to read out tonight. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Owen. Extracurricular committee met on March twenty-seventh at four thirty PM. We discussed a number of items, including, we went over the winter coaching evaluations. We had a discussion about that and a go-forward plan. We did a strength, we discussed the strength and conditioning program, the implementation, implementation and the rollout of that. We talked about participation numbers. In the two weeks prior to that, we had had a hundred two slots that were filled in a ten-day period. So an average of about ten kids per day that were doing that. And they were also trying to work with our coaches for whole team activities. We went over a winter sports review or a kind of a end of the season wrap-up for the winter sports and a spring sport preview. We discussed Steve Hicks, our trainer, being out until April seventeenth. Talked with Guthrie about them finding us additional coverage with trainers. They've been really good with that. So they've helped us out. We've had, um, Bill from Troy, Pete from Sare, LJ from Waverly was there yesterday, so they've done a good job with that and make and do until Steve gets back on the seventeenth. We talked about summer and after-school rec and how they were going. And that was, that kind of sums it up, but just last thing I'd like to sum up just some of our winter sports accolades that we had. Our boys swimmers finished second in the district championship. We were the gold medal team in the four hundred relay. The members of that team were Brayden Pettit, Ethan Hicks, Eli Hicks, Ronel Ancom, and Ryan Gorman also went along. Brayden also competed in two individual events at states and the team also qualified on time in the two hundred free relay. And so also congratulations to Coach Keister and Coach Chantel for that. Lastly, our wrestling team, our boys wrestlers had nine wrestlers advanced to the district tournament and six qualified for regionals. We had a state qualifier in Nathan Vanderpoel. Our girls wrestlers, they had four state qualifiers, Hannah Rathman, Ashlyn Van Fleet, Abby Wagner and Leah Nason. Three of those wrestlers were within one match of meddling at the state tournament. And I think the cool thing, first ever girls wrestling D four tournament in Athens was a chance. So that was an awesome, awesome thing for our winter season. That's what we discussed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Okay, next we'll move on to superintendent's items report, starting with Mr. Stage.
I am going to offer my time to Ms. Katie Galinsky, who's here from nutritioning tonight, and that will conclude my report when she's done.
Very nice.
Oh, Leanne Young is also with her. Sorry, Leanne.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sage, for allowing me to come in and, and talk a little bit. Really appreciate it. Everybody, my name is Katie Galinsky. I know I've met most of you before. Thanks for having me. I just wanted to give a quick update. Leanne and I left a little sheet on, in front of you, just to give a little update of what's been happening in the food service program this year. It's been a busy year. I know many of you have met Leanne and she did a little taste testing of some of our new products earlier this year. So just a quick update I wanted to go through. So September to March, up in the top hand corner, you can see we are serving about five hundred more breakfasts than we were last year and about just about four thousand more lunches than we were last year. So that's really exciting that we're continuing to serve more students. Some pictures that you can see of some of the different meals that we are serving. This year, in the beginning of the year, thanks to administration and to IT's help, we did implement a new POS software. So now we're using a new updated cloud system called Premier Wedge, which is the state recommended system. It works with, uh, what our food service secretary is using to pull some of your enrollment numbers and direct certification students. So you're using all of that same one now. We have four mobile stations and four, um, stations that are located in the elementary schools. So they're really nice and versatile and cloud-based, so up to date, which was different from our last program here. So far this year coordinated ninety-five special function caterings, which is up probably, uh, double for what we did in the last couple of years. So thank you for everyone who continues to order special functions. We love to do those. The kudos to the staff here. We could not do it alone. They do such a wonderful, wonderful job and to all the sports banquets or, uh, different, I, I think we did some with FFA or have some coming up. So just thank you for allowing us to participate in those. We really appreciate it. This year Athens was up for an administrative review, which is through US, uh, the USDA and through the state. Harlan Row Middle School was chosen this year. It happened on March twelfth. And we completed a flawless onsite review. We had a couple things that we had to provide some more information on the offsite, but they were able to close that. So that means that you are in compliance with Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act, National School Lunch Program and School Breakfast Program for the next five years. So it's really exciting. Probably the most exciting is that Athens was just awarded twenty thousand dollars for the PA expansion breakfast grant. Leanne was able to fill out that application. And the PX expansion breakfast grant came out for us to order some different products and order some different equipment to help expand breakfast. So what we're really looking to do is offer more breakfast after the bell, uh, second chance breakfast, and then increase some nutritious breakfast options like smoothies. So Leanne is working with the state to get that expansion grant updated. We filled out the information so far and hopefully we'll receive seventy percent of those funds in the next couple of weeks, so we can order those for both the high, high school and the middle school. And traditionally, that's where we see the lower breakfast numbers. That's why we wanted to focus on those two buildings. And actually of all nine of my schools, seven were selected and Athens was the only one that had two buildings selected. So it's really, really great. And then finally, I thought it would be great to share, I know a couple of years ago you had selected to go CEP, meaning that every student receives free breakfast and free lunch every day. When you did that, I know that it was a little bit of a lower rate. Since you've selected that, um, the rate has continued to increase. This year we claim seventy-six point two nine percent free. And as of the April first data, which is what the state and USDA use, next year we will claim about seventy-eight point eight eight percent free. So that's really great. You're going to see additional revenue. Something that I think is really important as, um, of course, we want to serve every student free breakfast and free lunch. That is the most important thing, but also to bring in that extra reimbursement. All students will continue in PA to receive that free breakfast and you will get full re, uh, free reimbursement credit. If you've seen that in the news, that is now permanent in PA school code. They put that in December twelfth, I believe, of this year. So it's very exciting. Um, and then of course you're continuing to offer free lunch to everyone and you're going to continue to see those CEP rates increase. So this year we projected, or for next year, I worked with Jenny to, uh, project a return for your food service program of around eighty thousand dollars, which is really exciting because when, uh, you elected this a couple of years ago, I know it was a little bit closer to that break even, weren't sure really what to predict, but as we continue to see these numbers increase, you'll continue to see that return increase. You can invest that back into the program and not have to pull it from your general fund, which I was excited to bring to you. So thank you so much. I don't want to take too much time. Thank you so much for always including us. Really appreciate it. We're going on eighteen years, our eighteenth year that we've been partnered with you. Just wanted to say really, really happy to have your support and welcoming to myself and Leanne always. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. Thank you, Mr. Stage. Yes, we agree. So we'll move on to blast, um, IU seventeen. We have nobody reporting out on that for this month. Next is the career center. Ms. Cooper, do you mind if I provide the update? I had the honor of attending the career center meeting this past month for Mrs. Cooper. So just a few, a few updates that came from that meeting. Firstly, uh, the career center hosted a visit from the PA Secretary of Education on the twenty-second, which was actually the day after the, the meeting that we had. I know Mr. Stage and his peers participated in that. And from what I heard and saw in the paper, it seemed like a very successful visit. on the twenty-second, which was actually the day after the, the meeting that we had. I know Mr. Stage and his peers participated in that and from what I heard and saw in the paper, it seemed like a very successful visit. Also, as part of our meeting, they shared an update on enrollment numbers for next year. As of right now, the twenty-four, twenty-five enrollment numbers for the Career Center is just over five hundred, five oh five, which I think is probably a record. Um, and about a hundred and five of those, uh, are coming from Athens. So healthy overall for the Career Center and healthy for the Athens, uh, students as well. To also twenty-four, twenty-five, the Career Center budget has received approval from all the districts. If we recall, we voted on that here a couple of months ago. Um, also at the meeting, we just reviewed and approved several building and grounds upgrades, a lot of the upgrades around like security. Uh, vestibule upgrades and, um, and traffic protective barriers and things like that. Um, and then lastly, I'll share is the, uh, annual Career Center Rewards Day is scheduled for May twenty-third. So that concludes the report on the Career Center. We'll go over to, uh, PSBA then, Mrs. Minnick.
I don't have anything to report.
Okay, thank you. So then we'll move on to solicitors items. Mr. Barrett?
I just have a couple of matters this evening. We have a, a few, uh, personnel matter coming through in the next month, which we will, uh, be doing our arbitration with. Secondly, we have a, uh, pre-trial tomorrow and a, uh, an assessment appeal where we will get the lawyer for the, uh, um, appellate and, uh, the lawyers for the three municipalities, the, uh, the township, uh, the school district and the county together in front of the judge and see if we can work out a settlement in this matter. We get one, I'll report to you the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. So next we'll move on to financial business. We have our normal monthly financial business items as well as the Nutrition Group Food Service Budget and then the Physical Therapy Services RFP memo. Mr. Stage, anything you'd like to share on any of those items?
Uh, the only thing I wanted to note is, uh, general build, uh, nothing new or exciting for you guys, the Nutrition Group's annual budget, which we see every, every year. But the one thing of note is the physical therapy bid. If you all know, um, we did have a contract with Pivot. Um, they are able to provide services. So, uh,
We have to, um, we had to go out and find, um, a provider. We did this RFP, uh, about a couple of months ago and we really didn't find any viable candidates. I will tell you this time, um, we did receive what we believe, uh, is a, is a viable candidate, um, that being Endless Mountain Therapy Association, um, LLC. They're out of SARE. Uh, we feel that they will adequately meet our, our physical therapy need, uh, for now. Um, so you'll see that on there and we, we want to move forward with, with putting them in place for July one. All right. I think my only suggestion on that is maybe move that out of financials and move this into the contracts and agreement section. Just, just a thought because it's more of a, an agreement, so. I don't know. Just the thought. I don't know. It's just me thinking out loud. Yeah, the physical therapy memo.
The actual proposal?
Yeah, we should have it. I don't know where it's at, so we'll have to. It should have been in the, in the, in the RFP proposal should be the actual RFP that we approved. So we'll have to, Corey probably. We have a memo from Corey asking to, to accept the Endless Mountain Therapy Association, um, RFP. So we'll get that memo to you guys and we'll put that on the agenda for Tuesday.
So we, we have the memo. We'll actually get the actual proposal for next month. For next week then. Okay.
Right. So I think that's the key points on the financials.
Okay. Any other questions or conversation from the board on the financial business? Okay, then let's move on to the next section, uh, personnel.
Yep. So, uh, if you look over the personnel, you'll see, uh, we have some resignations. Emily Norton, a school psychologist, uh, she is going to finish the school year. Uh, so we, we, we thank her and that'll be a tough position to fill. Um, just so you, everybody is aware, uh, we are asking you guys to move on some, uh, professional position changes. So it's always complicated because you have to eliminate and then create. So you'll see some position eliminations and then you'll see position creations. Um, these don't create any more jobs. It actually balances itself out. So, you know, reducing the computer science teacher at Harlan Row, which was shared between Harlan Row and the high school, and that person was, uh, transferred into a role at the high school, a vacancy. Um, you'll see us, we're going to be remove, eliminating a, a middle school math teacher. That teacher also is transferring into a vacancy at the high school. Um, you'll see that there was a shared middle school and SRU learning support teacher, uh, doing our analysis, looking through our case, cases, um, caseloads. It, we found that that person needs to be at SRU full-time. So you'll see that elimination, but you'll also see it created again uh, under C that that person now is going to be fully at SRU. Now that was filled with a ninety, ninety position, a long-term sub, so that would be biddable and now it's out for advertisement. And also we had to create an, an additional emotional support room teacher at Lynch Busting. We currently only have one emotional support room that's currently at SRU, but because of the incoming early intervention caseloads and our growing, um, emotional support need both at Lynch and at SRU, it only, it requires us to have one at each building. So, uh, you'll see that. Those are the, the, those are the top takeaways off the personnel listing and then also looking to hire summer custodians and summer IT help. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Stage. Any questions?
Yeah, the only other additional thing is you'll see in board info because the transfers are in your board information section. You don't actually have to vote on them because they're part of the CBA. Click the bargain. Okay, sorry.
Any questions? From the board? Okay, so then let's move on to section seven, contracts and agreements. So we have one from Guthrie. Mr. Stage, anything to share on this one?
No, th- this one is, uh, just having Guthrie be our provider for thing, for all things medical. We've, we've had them for years. The standard document we use all the time. Nothing's changed. Um, just have to renew it.
Okay, any questions or discussion from the board? Okay, move on to section eight, policies. We have several here. Mrs. Cooper, you have to update at least a couple.
Yes.
Anything to share on, on these, with these first reads?
So we're, we're saying the first reads to go through, except policy number three one seven point two, we're gonna table and eight sixteen.
So, so they'll stay as first reads for next month. The other two.
The other, all the other ones.
We'll go to second reads next month.
So I, I would suggest since we're not, this is a work session, that we don't need it right tabled on them. We can just take them all and put them back on next month as a first read.
Does anybody, anybody have any questions on any of the policies then? That are on the agenda, that remain on the agenda?
I believe they're pretty, pretty straightforward, uh, just review and update.
General update, no significant changes. Yeah.
The, the reason for the one that we moved is because there are, it is dealing with the number of days in which things need to be reported to both the school, the board and other. And we wanted to make sure we had full committee to decide on the length of time. There's a discretion between some of us as to the, the timeframe.
I haven't marked here. I'll give it to Christine and she can, if you guys want to check it out and see what the board will view or the committee will view.
Thank you.
Okay, then let's move on to, uh, next section, curriculum instruction. Nothing at this time. The work session. Section ten, transportation items. Maybe there was a couple of bus upgrade requests. Pretty straightforward. Anything you want to share there, Mr. Stage or?
No, I, I think Chambers, uh, Chambers is simply just upgrading to newer buses, keeping their fleet of vehicles up to date and, uh, new. Obviously that changes the rate for those routes, but again, every year we look, we look over routes and change them as needed. So I can't tell you how that'll have an impact on next year, knowing that we're so close to the end of this year. It was relatively standard.
Any questions from the board on that item? Okay, then we have nothing on building the grounds. Nothing in the other. Section thirteen, does anybody have any recommended changes to future board action items? Section fourteen, visitor comments. Do we have any visitor comments today? Appears not. Section fifteen of the board communication and information items. So there are several items there. Mr. Stage, anything you want to draw attention to? You already mentioned personnel transfers. Anything else you want to?
Just the, the senior class trip had a, a change of venue. I think we let you guys know that, um, it's still happening within the same window. They're just, I think initially was going to be a Disney World trip and now it's turned out to be more of a universal studios trip. Oh, okay. Uh, they had a bunch of things in place, but I, I'll tell you just from being a.
How many students are going? How many seniors?
Bill, do you know how many kids are going? Yeah. Senior trip, Bill. They did good. They did well. That'd be great, but it, it's definitely above the thirty percent threshold. Okay, that's great. Probably the biggest number we've had in years. Maybe combined the last couple, so. Good job.
Okay, uh, board discussion items. Do we have any board discussion items to add? All right, then our next meeting is next Tuesday. We from today, uh, our voting session at the high school, seven PM. And we do have a need for an executive session following the meeting for legal and personnel. So with that, we will adjourn.